Our meeting will now come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silence. Silence for our men and women who are in the fighting abroad, and always for our police department fighters who protect us in our community. Please be seated. So this evening we have officers who will be sworn into a new position to motion, and trustee Hyer will swear in sergeant Thomas Warren, who attained the rank of lieutenant, and police officer Matthew Walsh, who attained the rank of sergeant. So, Thomas Warren, would you come up on the...
Before we do, Commissioner Man, maybe Commissioner Jackson can give a little bio of the post?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Thomas Warren, who worked at the Garden City Police Department for twenty-eight and a half years. He was hired in June twenty-fourth nineteen ninety-one, served as patrol officer. In nineteen ninety-seven, he moved to the tactical unit, and he was promoted to sergeant in two thousand and one. He's been in charge of the tactical unit for the last ten years. He's also served as the bomb's squad master, grand writer. Lieutenant Warren resides itself in kind of his wife, a twenty-two-year-old Susan. They have three children, Brianna, Thomas, and Ashley. Lieutenant Warren has proven himself to be an exceptional officer, supervisor, and leader. We have no doubt he will excel in his role.
All right, and now...
We'd also like to introduce Sergeant Matthew Walsh. Equipped in Valley Street, received associate degree in National Community College, and bachelor's degree in John Jacob College. Nineteen eighty-five, he joined the New York City Police Department. Upon graduation from the police academy, he was assigned to the one-fourteen precinct in Queens. During his tenure in NYPD, Matthew attained the rank of sergeant, assigned to the eighty-first precinct in Brooklyn. In March of two thousand and six, he left New York City Police Department, accepted a position with the Garden City Police Department. During his tenure at Garden City, he served as a field training officer for new recruits, and proved himself to be a leader among his peers. Where accomplished Sergeant Walsh will continue the tradition of excellence and professionalism we have known and expect for our police department.
All right, trustee Hyer, would you be go to Thomas Warren?
More than a time?
More than a time.
Okay. Do you want to use the mic? Raise your right hand if I have to make my statement. I state that I do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New York, and the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police lieutenant for the Garden City Police Department to the best of my ability. By the powers vested in me as a police commissioner in the Village of Garden City, I declare your duty of appointment. Congratulations.
Maybe have some photos? Would the board trustees like to be in this place coming?
Commissioner Jackson?
I'm Commissioner Jackson. Okay, did you have a family to see?
No. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Okay, repeat after me. I state that I...
I, Matthew Walsh.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And the laws and ordinance of the Village of Garden City.
Okay, and that I will faithfully discharge
And that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of a police sergeant with the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police sergeant with the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as a police commissioner in the Village of Garden City, I declare your duty of appointment.
Thank you.
Members of the board trustees, I would like you to remove item five from the consent calendar. Item five. Would you remove that? And then please look again. If the rest of the consent calendar is approved. All right, comments by the board candidates and our village administrator. Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I really have nothing on agenda. But I'd like to just remind everybody, it's talk earlier. I usually like to get outside, like any alarm. Because the pattern's in the past, as soon as you get a talk, sometimes the bad guys are out there. So it's good to protect your home, and protect your property, protect your family. But usually lights any alarms. You know, I had a talk earlier and later during the day.
Okay, and how about the beautiful ceremony? Would you like to tell about that? The AAA release?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Today, yourself, trustee Hyer, myself, and Lieutenant Warren responded to the AAA awards at the Fosse Hotel, where we see the two thousand and eighteen Traffic Safety Award. We got the gold award this year for our efficiency in traffic safety. That's put us, the DPW, and all the other agencies within the village.
And it was a beautiful event.
Yes, it was.
And it was a great accomplishment. And we had it before?
Yes, we did.
Not only that, Madam Mayor. I mean, they had police departments from Ramapo. They had white planes. I mean, it's really... There's police departments all over New York City and New York State that have been given awards by them. So for us, the Garden City to get an award, a gold award, year after year we get it, that's a tremendous accomplishment. So thank you very much for what you're doing every day. The guys are doing it all the time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge Bonnion.
Good evening, Mayor. I also have no comment, but I'm more happy to answer any board's questions. I do have the list of the property owners folder outside. If anybody could grab one of them and fill that out. That's going well. We just hired our latest intern, Molly. She just got hired last week. And she's working as an intern, and she's helped us to retrieve these property folders. So that's going well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Chief Strissel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing formal on the agenda. Just a external communication for a permanent request. We did respond to on Tuesday, the house fire. Assistant Chief Williams, a sergeant at the fire. Just like I say, the department did a great job. They knocked down the fire, made a body of fire in ten to fifteen minutes. We were operating at the local, approximately three hours. The department did a great job. They neutralized from numerous departments to the scene, and also the standby. Here are headquarters, protect the village, over operating at the fire.
Oh, great, congratulations.
That's all right.
It's important.
Chief, before we send out the fire department's consent calendar...
Yes, before we send out a letter, our secretary sends out a letter to the department.
You could just mention that. We appreciate their responding.
Yes, sir.
Chief, how many people chucked?
From out of one, all ready together.
No, twenty-five.
Twenty-six from out of one.
Chief, what time was that? It was about...
About ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock in the morning, and there were twenty-six volunteers there.
Yes. We also had mutually from Minneola Franklin Square, New York Park, West Berlin, Hall Place, Minneola volunteer ambulance, and anyone who handles there, anyone, I guess, pounding PD ambulance to the scene. And standing by our headquarters, the Village. We had four-four-part ladder, a west comes in ambulance, a helmet rider, and a car engine.
Chief, I'll also say, Chief, Woody did a good job in that fire. Thanks for that as well.
Chief, you also had a fire over the weekend, electrical fire on St. James?
Yeah, it was actually the same morning, it was two o'clock in the morning, on Saint James South. About two AM. Electrical service, the wiring, the conduit, started sparking inside, overloaded, burned through the conduit. And there was also a gas line, the gas grill right outside the house, right next to this conduit. It melted the gas line. Gas started coming out of the barbecue. There was fire on the exterior of the house. It did protrude the interiors of the house. We knocked it down fairly inside, and extinguished the fire in the house. A very minimal damage to the house.
As I told you, the resident of that fire couldn't say enough good things about the way things happened, and the way the fire department responded, and the care they took to preserve as much as they could. Charles, let's...
That was our all-volunteer fire department, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Great job.
Yes, Mayor. Late this afternoon, I received a telephone call from the attorney for the United States Department of Environmental Protection, and some paperwork that you probably have seen before in relation to their investigation of the old Roosevelt Field site, and their investigation of the plume and the water quality. And the EPA is doing testing, borings, to check for water quality and water safety. Part of their plan is to test certain areas within Garden City, in Garden City right away. Ordinarily, this would have appeared on your agenda in the November meeting, but the attorney for the EPA called me today and asked if there was any way it might be added on to your agenda tonight as they would like to assemble their equipment starting next week. Mr. De Francisco may be able to shed additional light on the topic, but that was the request from the EPA.
Just the... Just the Hyer and I, as well as Chief Mr. De Frank and the village administrator, we've been talking to the EPA now for six months. And we're all aware of what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, and where they're going to do it. Joe, do you have anything to say?
No, sir. It's just, I believe the urgency in this is that one of the demands we had put on the EPA is that we do not want them doing any work during the holiday season.
Correct.
And in order to have, get the first well installed before the holiday season, they need to start pretty much immediately.
Right.
So before they can do that, they needed this document approved by the village.
Okay. We had asked, they had approached us six months ago. Joe?
Six months ago. And we had requested that they do not do any work between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And they have said that they would do one. They're doing one on Garden, a hundred feet west of Grove, which they will do first, and they'll be usually putting in the median there.
Correct. Four wells...
Four wells, three locations.
Different sites.
That's correct.
And we just didn't want to interfere with the holidays.
Correct, we didn't want any work on Thanksgiving, New Year's. They agreed to that.
We'd ask them, this well has to be done by the twenty-second of November, which is, I believe, the Friday before Thanksgiving.
Friday before Thanksgiving.
I only have one comment I want to answer, but my only concern is, six months from now or a year and a half from now, when they want to put a treatment site somewhere, are we losing any leverage by not forcing them to agree now?
No, they've already indicated that they're preliminary, they have not done a complete study of where the treatment sites are to be.
Right.
They've already indicated to us the treatment site will not be in the village. It will be south of Grove Park. There's a Nassau County sump there.
On the other side of the fence.
On the other side of the fence.
Yeah.
We already had conversations with them, and they knew our unhappiness of having it in the village.
I mean, if they said that, then it was an improper answer. It just didn't help you.
But they have been complimenting so far.
And that's not written in the study either, but they indicated that they will not put it in Garden City.
And in the earlier, did they use that phrase that we always have seen to anything that we...
We should also point out that, as I understand the law that they operate under, frankly, they do not have to come to the village at all. But it is their operating procedures to come to any village that's affected, to seek approval at which they are doing, and they're trying to do it tonight, rather than delaying it any further.
That is correct. The EPA could do it without our consent, although it would take them much longer. The question is, if we want them to get this done promptly and with the conditions we described, then it should be done through this consent document. But if you decline consent, they have the power to do it anyway. It's just a lengthy process they need to follow.
I will certainly vote for the consent because I want them to get started and done and out of the village between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then they'll be back in in January.
We also want them to work with us in the future, right? Because they are all the actors.
They're not saying that. Is there a sentence in the document that says they'll work with us on the site of the plant tree?
There is not.
There is not.
But...
Right. They haven't even figured it out yet. They're talking about twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, or twenty-two at the earliest. I mean, I'm okay with that. Just that didn't help you.
May I ask them that there be unanimous consent to add to the consent calendar a resolution and authorize the mayor to execute the consent, the access agreements which have been supplied to the board?
I'll second it.
More favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The item is now added to the consent calendar, which will have a separate vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, the only item I haven't muted tonight was the item that was removed from the agenda.
Okay.
So, am I allowed?
That's it. This is what...
Thank you. So tonight, I'd like to give the mayor and trustees the update on our finances. How we concluded twenty eighteen-nineteenth fiscal year and how we're doing year-to-date so far in the nineteen-twenty fiscal year. So for the general fund, operating revenues, we entered the year about three point nine million dollars favorable to the budget. And this was mostly due to the bond proceeds that we received in the fiscal year for the community park multi-use field project of two point seven million dollars. As you recall, the trustees had approved this project and prefunded it with surplus funds until we went out to bond. Once we received the bond proceeds, it was put back into surplus. We also received about six hundred thousand dollars in premium on securities when we issued those bonds. And that goes into a reserve to help pay back the debt. And we also earned higher interest on investments in CDs and high interest rates that we had in the eighteen-nineteenth fiscal year, about three hundred thousand dollars in the general fund. And we received more, higher-than-anticipated state aid for mortgage taxes in the amount of about two hundred thousand dollars. When we prepare the, we'll go through the budget process every year. What we do is all the departments, we get together, and we look at the first six months of the year, the actuals, and we estimate the forecast every major of the year. So for the eighteen-nineteenth fiscal year, we had forecasted that revenues would come in about three point one million dollars stable. And so we exceeded that forecast twenty-bit. On the page, you'll also see about six point five million dollars of fund balance that we've created throughout the year. Four million dollars of that was due to the legal settlement that we had in the fiscal year. One point four million was for termination payouts from the reserve, and about eight hundred thousand dollars for fire department payouts. On the operating expense side, we were about three point five million favorable to the budget. And that was mostly the result of lower salary benefit and taxes due to positions throughout various departments, as well as retirements and filling positions at lower salaries. We also had lower debt service, estimated debt service costs that we had budgeted for due to timing of where the financing occurred. And we also had lower-than-expected legal fees and contractual services. Again, throughout the budget process, we had estimated that we would be about three point two million dollars favorable to the budget, and we exceeded that as well by being three point five million dollars favorable. On the enterprise funds, for eighteen-nineteenth, all enterprise funds, the pool, tennis, and the water fund, all the revenues exceeded the operating expenses. Although for the pool and the water fund, revenues came in slightly lower than budgeted.
The pool also includes a hundred thousand, that from the village, correct?
That's correct. So the village had a planned budgeted transfer to the pool fund of about a hundred thousand dollars.
Can we show that on the radio?
Yes, that's included in there. So the net profit from pool operations was about fifty-one thousand.
Real numbers, fifty thousand dollars.
No.
Take away the hundred from the village, you...
Yes.
That's what I added, right?
No, so it's a hundred and fifty-one favorable. So if you take out the hundred thousand, it's fifty-one. So for the first quarter of the nineteen-twenty fiscal year, for operating revenues, we are slightly lower or kind of flat to budget. The slightly lower revenues are mostly due to the building department application fees being lower than anticipated due to a project that's been deferred, the bike-studied-on-the-new project.
When that kicks off again, will we make that up?
Right, so it's anticipated once that project gets kicked off, it will be made up throughout the year. On the operating expenses, we're about one point five million dollars favorable to budget year-to-date. Again, this is mostly due to open positions in various departments for the first quarter. Many of those positions have been filled now. And we also had a timing of lower judgments and claims as, you know, compared to the past few years. And if you're looking at the variance from the prior year, we're showing an increase in the general unallocated category. And that pertains mostly to an increase in the cash contribution to capital projects. So there was a concerted effort this year to contribute more in tax dollars to capital projects. And one major capital project that stands out is the business district paving. So that's a project that is being paid initially through the village and then refunded from the business district once the project is completed. For the enterprise funds, all the funds are showing slightly lower than anticipated revenues. And that's expected to, for the most part, except for the pool. Most of the pool revenues are obviously are received in the first quarter, are expected to gain in the rest of the year. Expenses are also being slightly under budgeted as well. So for the first quarter ending August of twenty nineteen, our cash operating balances are sixteen million, nine hundred nine thousand dollars. Our investments and money market accounts, accounts that, you know, earn higher interest rates, we have a total of thirty-three million, three hundred fifty-four thousand. And investments in CDs was sixteen million. In the eighteen-nineteenth fiscal year, we saw an increase in interest rates compared to budget. Our interest earned was over half a million dollars more village-wide, more than budgeted. So that was a big uptick. And as you know, and all been seeing the news, interest rates are dropping, have been dropping steadily. So we are working to ensure that we're still, you know, will achieve the interest revenue that we budgeted for in this fiscal year. Any questions?
It's more about the presentation. So if you look at the sheet that has operating expenses, it doesn't matter which pool you picked, but...
What page?
Page three.
Three.
So we have in here a column for modified budget. So we'll just take finance. We'll go either one. So we have a number for the modified budget that is higher than the adopted budget. So which is the real one?
So the adopted budget is what the board approved, right? In April, the board adopts a budget. June first, the budget is automatically modified to include prior encumbrances. So what happens is, at the end of the fiscal year, there are encumbrances, which are basically purchase orders, right? Some goods or services were ordered, and a purchase order is done. And anything that's not paid, so it gets carried forward to the next fiscal year. So the budget moves with that to the next fiscal year. So these are approved purchases in one fiscal year that moves to the next. So for this fiscal year, there was, the last bullet on the bottom tells you that we encumbered two point one million dollars that carried forward from the prior fiscal year into the new fiscal year. So that starts off June first. And then throughout the fiscal year, there are approved budget, board-approved transfers from either contingency or from other accounts to fund additional operating expenses that are needed throughout the...
Does the modified budget numbers, that also includes things we just didn't get to? We had four hundred thousand dollars for parking lot A we didn't get to.
So this does not include capital projects? So capital projects are right separate funds, and those funds are allocated for that purpose. So they carry forward. Because capital projects tend to, you know, process full years.
Are there similar things to that in the operating budget?
No, so the only thing that carries forward are goods and services that orders were placed or services were rendered, but the payments were actually not made yet in that fiscal year. So that carries forward to the next fiscal year.
Okay, I would like, to me, it'd be wackier to show a variance versus the adopted budget, but I see where you're going. You almost have a separate carryover number.
Yes, like, for example, if something happens or that the board decides we wanted, you know, to a parking study, and we're going to transfer dollars from contingency to fund that, the actuals would show those expenses, but then the adopted budget wouldn't show it. So it's...
No, I know, it's not a perfect consistency.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So turn to your staff, your staff.
Yes, so we made an offer. We intubated the second income position. We made an offer, accepted, and will be starting on October twenty. Sorry. Yes, that is great news. Yes, I'm excited to have it.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Young.
Thank you, Meg.
Right to her.
A little nervous here. Hey, the Recreation and Parks Department has two items on the formal agenda. The first item is, we'd like to request a transfer from contingent to purchase some solar-powered trash reception vans. And we plan to put those down in Community Park if they're approved. Not only are they solar-powered, they also compact the trash, and they will send us a notice when they are full, so that we know when to empty them. And the other item is item seven for uniforms. This time of the year, we start looking at what we need for our part-time and seasonal pool and park workers, and we'd like that bit to be approved.
Very good.
Mrs. Young, I just wanted to comment on the trash come back. But I happened to mention that to several of my neighbors who have, you know, control when you play sports. And they said the amount of plastic bottles that between Gatorade and water and everything... And they said the amount of plastic bottles um that between Gatorade and ordering everything else that you see on the field, that literally is flying all over the place. So the thought of having our recycling bin there so that this way they can actually take them rather than just having them floating in the air and blowing around all over the place to be able to do that, plus also it needs a recycling effort. Um, many of the parents were happy, so I'm I'm glad that you guys decided to do it because it it just seems like a perfect match. It really does.
Thank you.
Mrs. Swizing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where are we putting this?
Community park.
All night?
No, there's only four for us.
Oh, sorry.
Anything further? Mrs. Swizing.
I just want to thank uh Mrs. Young for pitching this right now. Mayor and trustees, uh, there's just two prevent here. Uh, I remember four, um, first, uh, we're we're engaging in a consultancy, HR to help build support of care obligations. And also item three, I want to just uh congratulate Mr. Jamello uh in the great steward of the local park. I think the board is reporting this out.
We do that every year, don't we, for the ACA, for the CARE Act? Yeah. It's, there are terrible penalties if you make a mistake on it. And so that's a really solid idea to bring somebody in. All right. So now we are going to ask the votes of trustees. So if you have any questions and or any uh comments that you know at this time.
Eric. Justice Mark is in the audience from NYU Woodford. I just would like him to give an update on our ambulance service, what we all have on list and how it's going.
Thank you. I can speak kind of loud, but. Uh, Mayor, members of board, thank you very much for having me come in this evening. I just want to give an update as far as where we stand as uh pertaining to operations. Uh, as you know, we started January seventh of this year. So uh, numbers uh are from January seventh to uh October the sixth. So we've obviously had some uh some uptick from from that point. Um, at that point in time, total number of calls was just shy of fifteen hundred calls total. Uh, with a little over eleven hundred total transports to area hospitals. Uh, major breakdown of those calls, medical calls were sixty six percent of the calls with trauma calls uh making them thirty four percent. Uh, to- the top complaints for medical calls were as follows: chest pains, shortness of breath, syncope or fainting, and abdominal pains. Uh, for the trauma calls, uh, the top trauma calls are motor vehicle accidents and faults. Uh, notable events that we've been part of since uh since January the seventh, uh, the Easter parade, Belmont State's events, uh, Friday Night Prominence, uh, homecoming parade, and we are looking forward to taking part in the Turkey Tribe as well. Uh, I had been asked, uh, most recently, what our average response times are, and that's just over four minutes. Uh, as everybody knows, we are dispatched through the Garden City Police Department. So when somebody calls nine one one, that's in the village of Garden City, uh, the members of the Garden City Police Department answer that call and then dispatch uh the NYU Langollem ambulances into the community. I think I'm probably biased though. I think this has been a great partnership and we look forward to uh continuing.
Yeah, you know, biased of all, it has been a great partnership. And I gotta tell you, I I walk the promenade quite often. Uh, as much as I can, it seemed and there it's it's really nice and and all the young women and men and our staff and the ambulance, this couldn't be nicer.
We truly feel like we're part of the community and we thank you all for welcoming us.
No, thank you.
I can personally attest to what the ambulance service um twice. And uh, I couldn't have been more pleased with the response time, um, those who were on the ambulance, um, and the care that it took of my wife. I I think it's just a great service. Thank you.
It's been a really, a really warm reception, uh, and appreciation from the community at large. And thank I hear a lot of it. And uh, it's just wonderful that we have it.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much for your time. We'll show all of them off.
Justice, just make sure this gets down to them, people that are doing it.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm pleased we are.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the kind words. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Trustee John.
Uh, yeah, I have a bunch of things. Um, I guess I'll start with no particular order of importance. Um, curious why we're doing this beautification committee? We haven't had it for several years. Don't know why we need it. I don't know. To me, this is taking another step backwards in things we've been doing. Uh, we have a rec commission. I don't know why they can't deal with any things or our paid staff. Um, and I don't understand what they'd be doing. Cause if uh we have three people who, I I don't know whether they're picked by the POAs or not, but how does this work? Because if the rec commission wants to do something and these people want to do something else, who's making the decision? And I don't get this. I don't see the need for this. It's just my counter.
All right. Well, I appreciate your comments. I don't agree with them, obviously. Uh, I think that uh nothing will that will clearly home to me when working on the uh centennial celebration for May twenty fifth that I think that um there's a lot of activity that's not coordinated. A lot of very good people are making uh making strong efforts to make these things work. I think the committee could uh really com- uh contribute something to that. We have a great heritage in this village. It's not just about flowers and trees. We have a quite an inventory of monuments. Uh, they all have to be uh kept looking very, very well. They've been slipping on that. I don't think a step backward, I I would never agree with that. I think we need more historians. I think we need this committee. There is a uh, a lot of people in the community have asked me to reinstate it. And I would, it is a mayoral appointment, I I understand. And uh, I think it's a very important thing. I think we have to, we have a lot of things that are valuable and tell us a great deal about our community. We have a beautiful heritage as compared with many of the wonderful villages around us. I'd like to solidify it more. I think that uh their input would be valuable. Certainly not a step backward at all. I don't see that at all. And so I would uh, I would like to reinstate this this uh committee. And we are looking at this time, we are looking for someone from the western section.
I have a question. So what authority do they have in public meetings if they?
In the past, they met with.
I understand the audience. I understand all that. And I grew up here, so I totally understand that. But I'm I'm just wondering what authority they have and how will they blend with the rec commission and some of the others?
The community, yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but to just to clarify, a n- a body like the Recreation Commission is established by uh this board and empowered to make certain decisions, whereas the Beautification Commission is an advisory body only. So it is not empowered to direct or to determine any matter as unless this board chose to empower it with some authority. But currently, it is an advisory body.
Right. Well, I think that uh we, the community would profit from it and I'd love to uh reinstate it. All right, Don, do you need a motion for this? Not, not really.
If the, you are, you may make the appointment, should you choose to do so, you could ask this board to ratify it, but it's not a requirement at all.
Okay. All right, so then we move on.
Very well.
Um, if we, uh, I'd like to have everyone look at the uh number one on the formal agenda. Uh, that really is about asking for an extension, just so that people can clearly work out about. The uh, it's a request for an additional six month extension to complete the site plan and the arch- and architectural review approval process. That's just what it is. Um, so is there, are there any questions regarding this from the board? Do we have anything that we would want to uh speak to? All right, so then I think that we would, uh, do need a motion on this.
Sure.
Yes, we do. Finish with just general commentary.
Oh, okay, questions. I'm sorry.
Okay. I don't know if he else is anything. I mean, I, like you said, I have a bunch of things. Uh, I wasn't here last time. Where are we with the bathrooms, people?
The board approved the the change order uh last the meeting and I've uh signed it and forwarded to the vendor along with a purchase order. Have to speak with the Ms. Wu about the funding and I'm waiting for a start date. Thirty seven one ten ten, the uh, the convention, waiting for a start date.
How long will it take for that to complete?
When I spoke on the phone on the day, uh, I sent for the order and I told him I I wanted it done before the weekend before Thanksgiving. He said, I should not be probably gonna line up the the teams, you know, it's multiple players, Todd and I, so just wait for official sort.
So it will be in, the bathrooms will be available for each truck?
That is the verb will be made, but I don't have a start date yet, but.
Is is the, the change order was the same? Did it change? Did we talk to them?
The change, the change order.
It is what it was?
The change order is the new design.
Okay.
But the people doing it will be different. So once he got the change order, he now has to line up the resources. So I was hoping to have a date today. I've been asking you all week. I got email from him just before this meeting saying, I was out today, so I just saw this. And so I'll have you, I'll have a date with you by next week, so.
There's no other s- contracts or anything? He's just has to agree on when he's gonna get it done, it's just there?
He has, yeah, he has to, has to land resources so he can come in to the start date.
Yeah, man, I'm only have the change order has.
Where are we with bike racks? Right, now the whole lot and Stuart man.
Um, the uh crews who will be doing that work are currently finishing up the Seven Street project. And which should be, which will be completed next, early next week. Uh, and as soon as they're done with that, they will start on the concrete pair split bike racks at the train station.
Would you just talk about that Seven Street project for a second? What they're doing, when they'll be done?
Uh, sure. So we are installing uh three uh handicap accessible parking spaces on Seven Street. Um, and they, they, which include uh exit, the handicap accessible ramps uh leading up to the sidewalk from those parking spaces. It includes uh strapping, it includes signage, uh, and uh the work uh will be completed uh early next week, probably Monday or Tuesday.
Uh, it went for Ms. Wu. Where were you, where were we on accounting systems upgraded?
Yes, so uh, the project that was included in the capital plan is the replacement of our tax billing and assessment system. So that's our system that houses the, you know, largest revenue in the village, our tax, you know, revenues. Um, this is an old outdated system with, that's unsupported. So the board approved this project. Um, over the last few months, we've been working heavily with Total Technology Solutions. They were engaged to help us manage this project. They are reviewing the extremely lengthy uh statement of work. Um, we had numerous uh phone calls with Tyler Technologies to update that statement of work. Um, you know, some of the things they put in there, you know, Total is assisting us and saying, no, this is something, they're they're asking the village to do. He's saying, no, this is something that the vendor should be doing. Um, we've actually also given them a sample of our data so that they can look at the database that it, our, our information is currently housed in to see, you know, whether they can use that data to load into the new system. And they came back and said, yes, this this is fine. We can work with this. Um, so we're very close to finalizing the statement of work. Um, the other thing Total is also doing is making it consistent with the other two projects that the village has with Tyler Technologies. They're working with DBW as well as the building department. So they're making sure that all the deliverables are consistent as well, all the terms and conditions for the village are consistent. Um, so we're close to finalizing the statement of work with Tyler. Once that's done, then I will go on to Kirby's office to, for their legal review. Um, and then once that's completed, then we'll have a, an implementation date. And the project is expected to last approximately a year from, you know, start date to end date.
In other words, the y- the first time you'll be able to use it for taxing will be from twenty twenty one?
Yes, correct. Correct.
We're a year away?
Yes, mhm.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, other projects of this nature, you know, DBW project, it takes a long time to get the start, the start. But we want to make sure the statement of work is appropriate, it's clear, it's, you know, delineates all the, you know, world's responsibilities. Um, and it's going to have everything that we.
I know, just later than that, but where are we on upgrading all of our time attendance system? And making them usable and functional?
So the time attendance is a totally separate project. That's part of the eighty eighty key workforce now. The time attendance module, I believe, is the last module uh we put in. Um, it is poised to be implemented. Courtney, we're team working on defining the parameters. Uh, as you know, there's a time clock uh and swipe card system that replaces punch cards. Uh, Courtney, I already scheduled next week to meet on this, uh, to go over the final plans. Department's goal first, uh, bring it to department heads, make sure there's no idiosyncrasies in their scheduling that we need to know about and be programmed into the process. So uh, I don't think we're that far away from implementing it. I think certainly by your end, what you've been, by your end.
They have equipment decisions to make.
We have some equipment decisions.
Okay, it's now October fifteenth. Talked about this for well over a year. Can we set a deadline? All decisions will be made by November first? Let's get it done.
Be next week?
Like ludicrous, we have people filling out paper time cards, year after year.
This is, this is, this is craziness. This is absolute craziness. Can we get a commitment that it can be done by November first and then we can start using swipe cards before the end of the year? Well.
We can use, we can use swipe cards as early as the end of this month.
Well, let's do it.
For the, for the times that we have, the um, in the village, all employees need a different equipment because they're PCs. We don't have time cards and that. So then, once those equipment things are done, that can be done, but we have a significant amount of population that has swipe cards available or time clocks available to them because part of the population is already on swipe cards and we just have to move the rest of those.
Okay, so we don't have to do it all at once. We can do it, implement those that we can do as soon as we can.
It is possible.
This training for supervisors has to occur as well, sir. If I could just make a comment on this, um, I understand the frustration of not getting something done. But again, from my perspective, one of the things I think that we run into on the front end of excuses for anyone. But one of the things we did as a village is we established an HR department. This is something which is new to the village. This is something that we're working through. And I've worked with Courtney long enough to know that her attention and detail is as good as anybody that I know. So from my, from my feeling is whether or not this gets done by November first or December first or February first, I think what would make sense is that I think that the way that Courtney has always approached any project that she's ever worked on is to make sure that not only is something brought out in efficient time, but what is brought out, brought out the correct way. With two hundred and seventy strong odd employees, rather than just making sure we put fifty people on it by November first or November fifteenth. Again, I'm not taking away from the frustration that it's not, hasn't been done yet, but I think it's important for us to trust the people that we have in there and say, hey, listen, this is something that needs to be done. And can you have a clearer picture? Give us some timeframe of how you feel this should roll out. So that that's my look. I I understand that. However, my concern is not at the human resources level. I think from what I'm hearing from the village administrator, that each department has to sign off on what the human resources people have put together. And I'm just suggesting that we move forward as quickly as possible with all of the the various departments that have to use the swipe cards so we can get it implemented. Is that, am I, is my saying that accurately, Courtney?
What I'm saying, sir, is that you make all the plans about design. You put a system in, you swipe from scratch, it's easier. We have an existing method of capturing time. So if we introduce swipe cards, that system contemplates a certain way of operating. We have to make sure we merit through the system, yes, we don't, we don't wanna, we don't wanna have people swiping in and getting charged extra payroll time unless we know what the parameters are. We have to get time. We have, the departments start at different times. We have overtime worry about. We have to have the supervisors who currently sign off on paper cards, don't have to do it online so they can adjust the schedule so the payroll gets the right hours. So it's essential putting a system, turning it on. We have to be sure everything lines. Each department head needs to be part of that discussion.
Well, well, all I'm asking is that the department heads get into the discussion sooner than later.
That'd be, that'd be a little more structured. I think along with trustee Bowe said, we've got an HR department. Let them make the decisions, make the analysis, and get it done. They'll get input where they need it and when they need it, but we don't need twelve cooks in the kitchen. So if there's some equipment that she thinks we need to implement the system, I don't think she should have to go to eight different people to ask if that's okay. And I hope that's not what's happening.
That's what's happening.
So I think you need to set a deadline.
We need to set deadline and phase in how you're gonna train the people.
We need to set deadline and phase in how you're gonna train the people and get them all going. So some departments' people are ready than others, some departments have less complication than others. So pick a department that is more simplistic, that's approach to time cards, into time management and start it up.
So what is reasonable to get this up and running?
The entire workforce, including part timers at the parks and the anticipation of the summer health. We can do January first.
Okay, thank, okay. I mean, I'd certainly like to see that, I don't know what everybody else feels, but I think unless we set a deadline, nothing happens.
All right.
We're getting bogged down in lots of...
Courtney, are you comfortable with January first?
Yes.
January first?
Better than limits.
And I think it's just supposed to, nobody really cares if it's January tenth or February first, it's one we have targets.
Sure.
I guess my question is, would they be a schedule where each department will get a phase in?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess it'd be useful to set that, that schedule?
When you do the first one, you get the votes out for the second one, so that's the learning process.
So, have we identified which one will be the first department to...
That's a really...
Start with the smallest.
We support, we separate them next week. Good as it is, we do it.
January first, please?
Yeah, all right.
January first?
We have, you know, just generally on this topic, again, we have an expert, we have hired someone hired in this position. Pretty much anything HR related should be her domain. It's not putting down anybody else, it's just, you have a function.
That's why she, we started, that's why we have an HR department?
Whatever, whether it's DPW, police, the library, this is, they're all village employees under one contract. It should, everything related to them should be under HR. I mean, we should just figure out how to make that work, but I think that's the goal, is my goal. Last thing I have is library bathrooms?
Yes, that project is progressing very nicely, it's on time, they were coming in under budget. And it should be, it's scheduled to be completed the last week of October, barring any unforeseen setbacks.
All right. I commend you that you and Ralph finally took this over, because this has been sitting in the libraries at Purview for four years plus. And it's our building, my view is, anything physical, plant maintenance, that's our responsibility and we should take it over. They're basically a tenant, they can run the library, order books, whatever librarians do. Other than that, we control that building and we take care of it. And I was in there last week or whatever.
Several to...
It's, it's dummy. So, you know, we should, we should... And one of those ones, simply for budget, everybody, if it's capital approvals, if you ran a budget, we should make sure those get allocated. I think it should be run similar to like, one of the enterprise funds, have a separate, you know, plant maintenance kinda set up and we track everything through whatever department we wanna do.
Well, we do things for the library, they do, we do interact with them on certain things and it works very well.
I don't think it works well at all.
We, we do interact with them, but there's been some of singletches.
I'm talking about things like payroll, things like that.
Well, singletches along the way.
They should, they should be, that's HR, they're under the village contract, the CSA, that should be, again, interfaced with our HR department.
Well, so, what do we have to do to take, to be a charging facility, what do we still have to do?
I think we need to talk with the library board about what parts of their infrastructure they would like us to assist them with, because the bottom line is Ralph and Joe have been assisting with things like a plumbing system, an alarm system, et cetera, which is not just bricks and mortar, it's more, it goes towards the infrastructure and running it. By us providing resources to the library director and the library board, that allows them to develop programs in the library. So, I, I, I think we can sit down with the library board and, and fine tune what has already been started and continue to do it.
I think further, Trusty, join in.
Uh, not for me, no.
Okay, we go, going now to citizens' comments on agenda items. Is there anyone who cares to come up to the microphone? Yes.
Anthony Robinson, sixty five Fifth Street. If I may, Mayor and trustees, I'd just like to get a little history about the civic beautification committee on which I have served for thirty-two years since nineteen eighty-six. At that time, the reason it was initiated back then, the village tree on the village mall at Franklin and Stewart Avenue, somebody had taken an axe to it and the tree had to be replaced. And at that time, there was much ado about trying to find a tree that would be tall enough and good enough to be maintained on the village mall. And it was thought at that time by the mayor and the then trustees that it would be very good to initiate a civic beautification committee that would not just deal with the new tree that was to be planted, but also to work with the recreation department and the village arborists as an advisory committee, to work with them, just to kind of give our ideas and work along with the village with recommendations from the, particularly the village arborists and the then head of the recreation department, and, which we have done for all these many years. It is, it's totally volunteer and we need twice a year, both in spring and fall, to work with the village recreation department on the plantings, the coloration, and so forth. And I think now, there are actually more than twenty-one sites that we do open. And with the new, with the monuments and the new plantings around the monuments, I think, that will add to some of the scope of what we advise to be done. So, we're happy to, you know, we're volunteers, we, we represent. Kathy Orol has been a member for, I think, twenty-five years about? Kathy, I'm, I'm sorry, Patty Silla has joined recently in the last few years. And Suzie Ali, of course, was on the committee, I think, for, again, more than twenty-five years. So, you know, I just, my feeling is, and I, I think the rest of the committee agrees, I just think it's a good thing for the village residents to know that there is a committee that is dealing with the beautification of the village and helping the village to keep the garden, in Garden City. And we're happy to go on and happy to, you know, continue in this way. Each representing our own property, our associations. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you move further? Yes.
I have two unrelated questions. One is related to the budget. So, if my memory is correct, we had said for this year's budget, we were going to hire, I thought, two or three new police officers? Right? Remember, we had the whole discussion about overtime and that's how we were going to manage the overtime, we're sort of gonna make a new staff? I don't completely want...
We had that discussion, we did make, not make that decision.
Okay, so I'm only half full. So, do you have an update on police overtime? For the first quarter? Right, were you putting the first quarter budget, is that included? And compared to last year?
Do we have a budget, do we have a statement on police overtime in the first quarter? This is what you, yeah?
Yes, for the police department, the overtime year-over-year, last year it was two hundred and seventy-three thousand. This is year-to-date September, the first four months of the year. For this year, it's two hundred and ninety-four thousand, which is flat to the, this year's budget.
So, I'm sorry, so the two seventy-three was the same timeframe?
Exactly.
So, okay, so we're down considerably?
No.
No, we're down. What do you want us to do?
We're out.
So, do we know, because we were very concerned about police overtime last year in total in the budget and now we're already trending up, do we know why?
Can you shoot a jaxon?
Yes, uh, the four months, actually three of the months we were over last year, August, we had, so, we had some employees with serious surgeries that had more lengthy timeouts, so, we had severe medical, we had a break in season, we had two surgeries, and we also had two officers injured in the rest, in our calls. So, August, we had a month of more overtime than last year. We are working, we are putting a lot of controls in place. Each overtime has to be approved by a supervisor. The, every form that is submitted, I review. I also do monthly reports with Trusty Harrow, we go over the overtime every month, sometimes twice a month. And we, also, we have, we were short, we short dispatches with two of the people hurt, so we actually would have been hired, but one of my likely goes is we came back from a long-term injury, folded ass spot, so we saved actually about four hundred hours since June first with that, with that. Moving forward, one of the issues we had was civil service would not have provided a list promptly. We now, we gave free office to NYPD offices, which is good because they go on the street with, after about three months, a three-week orientation instead of seven months. Two officers have been hired and they are currently in their orientation phase. Another one should be a shorter, they have a power about a month. We also have a senior academy, he should be out at the end of the year after his training. We also have, we had one part-time parking enforcement, we, we budgeted for three. The part-time over the summer was seasonal, so we worked on this full time. And we're in the process of, we have two more positions with, with the part timers and now it helps with court and weekend assignments. So, and we, one thing I did work with civil service, I had meetings with them. And I also had meetings with Nassau County Police, who does the African investigations. And I'm working with them on speeding up the processes. And I, we had a good meeting last week and one of the people who helped up was cleared. So, we are working on that also. So, and we're also working with the village, you know, maybe on future contract, I, maybe it might help us. And, and we're also working on, we have calls, a lot of times we're in those calls, sometimes I've been in tours. We are, those we could to try to get that back also, all duties who's possible and request them for the next fully possible.
So, just so I'm clear, so the officers, thank you. So, the officers that you talked about that are either the, the New York City and the ones who are retraining from Canada, out of training, are replacement positions, either for those who retired?
Yes, we have, we have, we have four retirees in the last six months, and they're replacing those officers.
Thank you.
I'd like to respond to some of this. Every analysis we've gotten says that regardless of the number of officers we have, we're still gonna have the overtime. So, we responded by saying we're hiring more people, but that doesn't affect overtime. So, it's not really, that's, it's almost a separate issue, whether we have fifty-three or forty-nine or forty-six. So, I don't think it's correct to respond that new officers are gonna drive down overtime. They're not, according to the department's own analysis, given year after year.
So, but if we're short officers, Brian, we have that much more overtime. In other words, if we're down to forty-nine, we're gonna have to have more overtime than if we had the fifty-two that we have now. And I'm not saying, I, I, I agree with you partially that it, it's not the do all and end all to end overtime, but the least, less amount of officers you have, unfortunately, is gonna generate more overtime.
And, and who you hire makes a difference as well. You're, you're hiring guys that are already trained instead of going through seven months of training.
Do they come in at a higher pay scale?
I'm sorry?
Do they come in at a higher pay scale than ones that are real?
No.
Just in mind, they get the out-of-academy salary, it's, it's six months' salary they would get.
I think what David Wright's time says is that the police department has grown over the last eight years, overtime has not. Private overtime has grown, it's been certain with it. So, you have more police officers and more overtime.
I'm not disputing that, I, I think he was talking about the way people are hired and the savings that way.
But does security have?
No, there is. He's not, he's getting them out on the street a lot faster, instead of seven months of, of putting people in their places on, on overtime, he's getting them out there faster, so he's not paying more money to do that stuff.
I'm just gonna make an educated guess here. I assume if we probably sat and talked with the community and said, "Would you rather have, Courtney say, have forty-nine officers or fifty-three officers?" I think in the world we live in today, they would rather have fifty-three officers. And I think that what happens is, is that although I agree, you always have to look at numbers and overtime and budgets and everything else, I also look at the quality of the work that the police force continues to provide to this community. So, I think that that's the balance, and it's a difficult balance that the village, that the board has to look at. But I, as far as I'm concerned, if we have fifty-three officers, I'd much rather have fifty-three than forty-nine.
So, are you saying overtime is irrelevant?
No, I'm not saying that overtime is not, is irrelevant, but what I will say to you is that I think that when you have a department that is ranked in the country, thirteenth in the country,
Well, it's not what they're ranked, it's anything.
One of the reasons why, one of, one of the reasons why I think that our, whether we wanna argue about the ratings of, of the village police or not, recall this, of that, police forces can sit to be one of the best that is around. And the bottom line is, is that I think that sometimes some of the things that they do is not what everyone else does. And to me, if I'm gonna sit there in a sixty-three million dollar budget for a village, not that I don't care about overtime, and that's not irrelevant, because to me, I think any department can always work more efficiently. And I think we can always look at areas to where we can improve it. But as far as I'm concerned, when I sit there and I read the reports and I see all the things that these officers deal with on a daily basis and put their lives on the line every single time they walk out the door, to me, I think that people, one of the reasons that people move to this community is because they have the level of service and protection that our offices provide. So, to me, that matters to me more on whether or not we're up or down on overtime. But it doesn't matter to me, because I think, as I said, with any budget, and especially with the police budget, which is one of the largest in our, in our village, the bottom line is, I can always look at that and say, "How can we look to work smarter and to try to cut down on overtime?" But I'm not gonna sit here and say, "Why don't we have less officers? So this way, our goal is to reduce overtime when I'm gonna have less officers there." That makes no sense to me whatsoever.
Which was not at all what was stated, my questions were really, at all what was stated, we have less officers. My questions were directed towards the way in which overtime is managed.
I didn't say your question.
Right, so for example, are there, is it, you know, the eighty-twenty where there are a very few number of people who are getting a large majority of the overtime? Are those who are paid at a higher rate getting more overtime? I think there's ways to manage it more effectively, I don't know the answers to those questions.
Sure.
But the number of officers has always been stated as a reason to have more officers will help in many ways, one of which is to drive down overtime, and I have, I have not seen that, so that was the point.
Quick one?
We, we do have equal distribution of overtimes and we, a person turns it down, it's the next person. So we do have a fair distribution and this way, somebody at the high end is not getting all the overtime.
So, you're confident in saying that the higher-end people do not get more overtime than others? It's available to all?
It's, it goes, the first person gets off it than the next person, than the next person.
Correct, so everyone turns it down.
Generally, the higher-level people do get most of the overtime.
Yes.
That is correct.
That's a fact.
Yes.
But my next item is...
I don't think that is correct.
It is correct, look at the numbers. It is correct, I looked at it yesterday.
If, if it goes, if it goes, if it goes through a list, people are turning it down.
That's not the question, that's not the question. That's not the question.
That's fine, and I'm gonna say what I wanna say, you asked your question and I'm gonna say what I wanna say. He has to go through a list, he has to put it out there for people. If people don't fill those positions, then he doesn't have anyone to work. So it's, he'll offer it to the lesser, people with less time at a, at a lower salary. If they don't take it, the next guy's gonna take it. He has to fill the position.
I think what Trusty Bowe said is a valid point. I, I don't think this should be an argument over that we don't want a competent police department, police department or a fat police department. We want a well-managed police department. And, and asking questions about overtime is a very difficult thing, because these people do work for our village, they do put their lives on the line, and that is their job. So, I, I don't want it to get, I, because where people are questioning overtime or the management of the funds, it shouldn't be that you're not supportive of the police department. And I feel like the conversation is turning now.
Can you say, can you...
All right, we've passed the time on the start date, it's on our agenda.
All right, we've passed the time on the start of the agenda item. I think that looking at, I'm sorry. I think it's a healthy thing to look at overtime in every department with a microscope. It is complicated. I've tried to do it myself. It is extremely complicated and it also involves union contracts. So I think that your question basically is that you want to be sure that we are looking at and being circumspect with the overtime. And I congratulate you for that. And yes, we are trying to do that, and I think that we are doing better.
Quickly, my second, I think is a little bit.
Judy, I can also say, in the time that I've been on the police commission, or police committees, we look at overtime monthly and we go through it with a fine toothbrush. And if there's anywhere, any place we can reduce it, it gets reduced. It's looked at by everybody down the line. He has staff meetings, he talks to his supervisors about overtime. It's being managed.
When's the consultant coming in? When's the consultant coming in?
The consultant will come, will have the report turned around a week after we give him the final confirmation commission which he received on Monday.
So when will he, when are we getting the information back to them and having it back?
I'm not sure what all of you are.
I'm working on it and hopefully I'll have it done very soon.
Okay, this could be, and so.
My other, top down the EPA, things that were brought up, just so I understand. So two questions on that. One is, how will the, at least the Garden Street community be notified when that work is going to start?
They will be notified.
Just like a flyer that?
Flyer, we will have, we have a definitive date as to when it's going to start.
Well, we know, they'll know.
They'll know.
And it'll be soon.
Does anyone, I don't know. What is the Garden City boundary over by Grove Park? I actually don't know what it is. Like, the stump is not in Garden City?
It is not Garden City.
And what about, what about the hill over?
The fence, the fence at the end, I understand the Grove fence, the end of Grove Park is the end of Garden City.
There is a, there is a green area, that's Garden City.
Oh, that is, so.
Yes, that is Garden City.
The theory, our hope, is that nothing would be built on that green area as well, because that's the village property.
The way things stand now, Judy, they haven't even.
No, I understand.
We've had a number of conversations with the, the last conversation we had was they are going to put it in the Nassau County something. They've already talked to Nassau County about it. But they have, we're talking about 2021, 2022, which I'm amazed that, I thought they would be doing it sooner than that. But we're, you know, we've had.
I think I always said like three years ago. I just didn't know where our lines began.
I think it's at the end of the green area.
All right, thank you.
Anyone further? All right, then at this time, we are going to have a motion to approve minutes about June 3rd, 2017.
I'll say.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, I didn't notice that Luceno wasn't with us this evening, so that motion carries seven, zero.
Six, I wasn't here, I wasn't here the third, so.
He's not going to go in it because he was not here.
Oh, okay, so.
Six, zero.
Six, zero. All right, very good. I may have a motion to approve this resolution, requesting an extension at 555 Stewart. Trustee Dorian, second, trustee Hare, all in favor? Is that unanimous?
No.
No.
Six.
What?
Six, zero.
Six, one.
That motion carried, five, one.
Six, one.
Six, one.
Six.
All right. At this time, I would want to ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar except for number five. Do I have a motion for that?
I will.
Trustee Delaney, I'm the second, trustee Holy, and all those in favor? Okay, that's, what is it? I'm confused here. Everyone, seven, nothing. Seven, nothing. All right, very good. Now let's.
No, we aren't.
Thank you, good. Now we will move to number five, quite frankly. With respect to item five, Mr. De Francisco, please comment further.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So over the past, I guess it's been close to six to eight months, I've been speaking publicly about the emerging contaminants issues with the water in the village and on Long Island in general. 1.4 dioxide is obviously a serious issue that we need to deal with. The state has implemented or is going to implement standards, minimum contaminant level standards, it looks like at the beginning of the new year. And the village of Garden City is going to be adversely affected by those standards. We are rushing and working as hard as we can to try to meet the standards that the state is going to be implementing. And as part of that, we're working very closely with our water consultant, H. Shuen, who is also working in turn with other water districts on Long Island because all these other water districts are in the same position as we are in terms of trying to get our wells up to standards in time and still to be, and still have the ability to provide water to our residents that meets, that meets all federal, state, and local standards. Item number five on the agenda tonight is for the purchase of storage tanks for peroxide for a new filtration system. Over the last few board meetings, we have, I've asked the board for approval to purchase new filtration systems that are required to remove dioxide from the water. As part of these systems, it includes the filtration system itself. There's a containment system, a building that is being prefabricated, custom-made for the water departments on Long Island as sort of a, like a plug-and-play type of building in order to speed this process up because we're working under a very strict deadline being implemented on cost by the state. So there's a number of different components involved, additional filtration systems, building systems. This is, this is another step in the process. This is a storage tank that's used to store peroxide, which is part, is needed for the new filtration systems. So I'm actually tonight asking the board to allow me to make a purchase which is outside of the purchasing guidelines in order to, again, speed up the process. You know, getting through the winter under these guidelines is going to be very difficult. If these filtration systems are in place by the summertime, you know, it's going to be a tough situation. So the faster we can get these systems in place, the better off we will be.
Is there a wall of heat time for getting these in?
That's one of the issues, yes. There's a significant demand for these products. Every water district on Long Island is buying these products.
So we have to do this now?
Yes.
Trustee Delaney.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, we're totally in favor of this, but the water you're drinking today is probably the same water you drank five years ago, 15 years ago, 30 years ago. All that's happening is that the state is implementing a standard for something they never did before. We are addressing it to now make our water in compliance. But whether you take a drink of water today or January 3rd, or whenever this system gets in place, it's the same water you've been drinking for the last 30 or 80 years. So this is, we can't, we're not turning off the water January 1st. That's not what's happening. It's just we will be out of compliance with the standards and we will have to report it as such. And we are trying to get into compliance with, again, newly implemented standards that were never in place before.
And in addition to that, the standards may not take effect January 1st. They are proposed to take effect January 1st. And for everybody in the audience and our residents should realize, we started this about eight months ago. So this isn't something a week or nine months or a year ago. This isn't something that we just started two weeks ago.
Trustee Voloberk, deputy mayor.
One of the other items I just wanted to mention is that there have been several people that have either talked about this, especially in my section in the West. And one of the concerns that they have is, you know, why is Garden City facing this? Many people don't realize that this is a long item problem. This is not just a Garden City problem. So in today's newspaper, if you pick up today's news day, there was actually an article that was written all about this. And in there, I'm just going to read a couple of lines. It says, "The 1.4 dioxide was detected in 70, 70% of Long Island's drinking water wells." It basically said it's going to take years before required systems are designed, built, and approved. And the line says, "Hemsted, Roslin, or Texville and Bethpage were amongst the districts that said that they don't have enough uncontaminated wells to meet the proposed state standards." In addition, towards the end of the article, it said, "In Bethpage, five of the nine wells exceed the proposed state standards. Another two are approaching that standard." And then the person from Bethpage said, "We are not able to provide adequate water to the community under the state's proposed maximum contaminant level." Now again, no disrespect to anyone, but this is one of the reasons why as a board, we've been working on this for the last eight months to a year. And the reason that we have spent the money that we have, where I'm sure Mr. De Francisco confirmed, that many communities have not even, have not even begun the process. So the reality of it is that Long Island now is being handed a bill of about $840 million plus dollars. And I think that we're addressing this in the most prudent way that we can. And I also wanted to commend the water department and the people who work there because I know that this is not a easy task to do. And I just wanted to say thank you for letting you guys do this. Please let the people who work know.
So is the emergency status supposed to go into place in January?
In the new year, yes.
So my understanding is the state's now is reviewing public comments.
Yes, in fact, the New York Water Commission had a meeting yesterday in Albany to hear more additional comments, public comments. Because during the initial comment period, I think the biggest, the biggest concern that they heard was that we just need more time. Nobody's against these regulations. We want to deliver clean water. It's just we need, the water districts need time to do that. And I think that was the overwhelming response to the state standards is, we hear the standards just give us time to do it. So they reconvened yesterday in Albany and had another public hearing with public comments. There was a number of water districts that attended. And we're hoping that they'll, you know, take into consideration and possibly give us more time to implement this. But there's no guarantee, it's just.
Whether this is January, February, March, April, whatever the deadline is, we still have to do it, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So, I mean, we're getting a deadline point no matter what, and doing what we need to do in anticipation of January 1st?
That's, I'm operating, I'm operating under the assumption that these standards are going to affect in January 1st of the new year until something changes.
Until someone tells you to quit.
Correct.
But the standards haven't been finalized, right? There's still a chance that they may override the level, right?
Correct. Unfortunately, the Rosemont Harrys, their microbars are down.
So whether they do or not, we'll be getting it out of the water as fast as we can.
Correct.
Good.
All right, based on this discussion, is there a motion to declare an emergency so as to authorize the purchases without competitive bidding?
I'll make a motion.
Trustee, trustee Johnny, and seconded by trustee Hare, all those in favor? Okay, that motion carried. The emergency resolution waiving competition bidding is passed. Is there now a motion to approve then, item five that we set aside? Trustee Johnny, and second, trustee McPrenos, and all in favor?
Just vision.
Okay. Item five is approved, seven, zero. All right, now we are going to go to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Come to the front, please. All right, and remember that you have four minutes to, yeah, you have four minutes.
I'm Thomas Kaufman, 365 Stewart Avenue. Brilliant that you're doing this for the 1.4 dioxide, thanks. You're using the Trojan Company in Canada, they are the premier people in this field right now, are they not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Okay.
So we're like the only ones.
So whether you have an open bid or not, you're the only ones. Anyhow, your next item on here is number six. It's about the solar recycling panels. I just found this in my garbage in my building. I live in a building with about 81 apartments. And I see a lot, a lot, a lot of plastic every day. I see a lot of packages. This is single-use plastic. What happens to this when it goes into your solar panel recycling things? Where does it go? I guess it goes to the place where they burn it because you're not able to sell this anywhere in the world. 9% of the plastic is recycled. The rest of it is burned. There's been microplastics found in the Arctic Circle, all the way to the Alps. Why is that? Because it's in the air, it's in the snow. We now know that it's, we're breathing this in on a daily basis. So much to the point that we are consuming one plastic bag a week, or ingesting one plastic bag a week. What can we do about that in this town? Everybody here is doing this job for the city, for Garden City, to, for the public. It isn't for your own ego, it's for to ensure the health of your public. Well, maybe, and you, I don't want anybody else. But why can we not outlaw single-use plastic and bring in something like this? Which is a paper bag. In 1986, they were using these in France for vegetables and fruit. They still use them today. What's, what's, what's the bio, what's the, what happens to this versus this? This winds up in our body, this winds up probably being biodegradable. Why can, why can you not put a law together to eliminate single-use plastic? Because the state is doing it for bags, but what about all this stuff? The other day, I went and got a piece of pizza to take home, and it's something like this. What happens to this stuff? Can anybody answer that question? Anybody aware of this? What happens?
Just us.
It winds up in the atmosphere. It winds up in your, in your, in your body, in your, in your, in your children's body, in your grandchildren's body, and what good is that? It's not helping anybody. Can you not eliminate things like this? Can you not pass a law just to eliminate single-use plastic here in Garden City? Because that's so hard to do. Aren't you interested in the, in the, in the health and well-being of your own children and grandchildren? Let me ask you a question. I'll ask you another question. Please do. And I'm not opposed to this, but, okay, so a resident goes to Adelphi Deli, which is not in Garden City. I keep control what they buy there. So then how does that impact in your example, now you're in your building, someone has that plastic container in their building? It's useless.
You know, that's, that's not really the argument here. Because Adelphi does a whole bunch of stuff environmentally correct.
Adelphi, Adelphi Deli. Or Stop &amp; Shop, which is in West Port Lake. We are so small and isolated and impacted by everything around us, what good would it do?
If we set an example, okay, if we would set an example, okay, it would possibly start the ball rolling for every other community on Long Island.
Thank you.
Are we, are we?
We have expanded our.
That is an error.
Yeah, and that's correct.
We have expanded our.
Sorry, let.
And Brian, you have, you have two kids.
That's right.
And Robert, you have grandchildren.
I'm sympathetic to this conversation.
Yeah, you have grandchildren, correct?
Me?
Yes.
Not you, I'm sorry. Now, do you want to sign? There's many people that need to. Larry, if I am rich, I'm, I'm, I was gravestly looking at a different pile of newspapers. Don't be touching my wife. Maybe there's something I didn't know. Only marriage will provide you.
I think we're all understanding, yes, there is symbolism.
I've got a color plate here. I have a color plate here.
Wow. I was, I was, when you talked about your grandfather. We have one.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you for talking.
So I'm, I'm very, I'm very interested in trying to promote, to promote this, and that, using something about it and not just dismiss it.
You'll take it, that's under consideration.
Who's, who can act on it? Who can really act on it here? Who can do something about it? Well, who, besides, besides saying.
A highly moderated and talented environmental advisory board headed by trustee Macrina, he would love to hear your conversation.
Well, I've been, I've been to the environment.
About this stuff, I know you went about the car.
Right.
I'm sorry? You went about the automobile.
Yeah, that's true, you know, that, that's something, I don't know why you don't do that either. You know, there was a twenty million dollar.
We have seen it.
There, there was a, I think, two, two minutes. There was a twenty million dollar fund given, that we wanted to get to the people in, in Brazil to stop burning in the atmosphere. Twenty million dollars, that's what you're going to spend our money here.
Seriously, you will take your comments under consideration?
But who can I, who can I talk to about?
We're talking to them right now.
The EAB, the environmental board.
Who?
The EAB, the environment.
No, 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 who here?
Oh, no, talk to us already.
Yeah, but I want to talk to one particular person who's going to, like, take the ball and roll it here, because I'm just a citizen, I don't have the power.
All right, so.
You guys.
We'll take it into consideration what you said.
You'll take it under consideration.
Yes.
Can I, can I go back and forth with you on this?
You can always go.
Can we have a meeting?
I mean, as soon as you tell me, Mike, we're in trouble, I'm dead with you.
All right, so, I'm talking about your parents, your children, what about your children, Brian?
All right, I'll, I'll.
You need to.
Please don't. Please take your seat.
You will.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
Hi, Susan Raina, we can, Joe, I was doing this today, I don't know what the law is, but the medical building at five-twenty Franklin, they don't have dumpsters, but they do leave their garbage. I thought it was your department that was being charged about it. This is weekly, they put it out, you know, on Friday, it says Saturday, it says Sunday, it gets picked up on Monday. Today, they have all cabinets that they had removed, and there were two confirmations going on there. I do the weddings and these funerals and these christlings, and there's always the garbage there. Right on the Fifth Street side, they take up a parking spot. I have spoken to them, I have gone to them, the church has gone to them, spoken, and they said they don't need a dumpster and they can do anything. The woman I saw putting out the waste the other day, she said it was medical waste from Quest. Now, if it is.
No, you can't put out medical waste.
I know, I know you can't.
Well, let's see, let me give us enough time to look into it.
I know, I, I didn't know if I was going to the right person or not, but this has been going on.
DPW, DPW will look into it, get back to you.
We tried to do it, you know, one-to-one, and then.
Sure, we understand.
Yeah. The other thing is, the trucks are still parking on Seventh Street, you know, blocking the traffic. You had the guys working in the street, so they had one lane taken. Those food trucks still came. I have spoken to you fellas about it. They were still there.
Mr. Jackson, if you have somebody to take it with that.
You can make a fortune just ticketing these guys, you know? We just have taxes, you know?
Let's keep special attention to police commissioner, police commissioner.
You know why? With two of them taking the whole lanes, when they come off of Franklin, they're on the journey line to go back on there.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, if you will give us a special attention.
Thank you. I think we should have a zero-dollars policy for all that kind of stuff, especially people doing U-turns on Seventh Street. You see the Leos, and you can watch them literally make U-turns right at the light, it's unbelievable. On a Friday night at eight o'clock, and in the back of Seven S, we have people constantly, continually parked in the loading zones. We should have a police officer there every single night and give a ticket, no more waving people off, no more saying, oh, hi, Mrs. Smith, I know you live on Seventh Street, you're a good Garden City person, just give everybody a ticket. That's my.
I believe you, I think if we just start to do it, people will understand, it will stop, see?
No tolerance anymore.
No, no more, Seven S is a disaster.
So don't come complaining when you get a ticket.
Can you add, I'll lean to that.
We have to change the law.
Okay, is there anybody who wants to comment? Anyone who wants to approach by the phone? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Trustee Delaney, I'm the second, trustee Holy, and all in favor? Motion carries seven, zero.